Welcome, everybody, to our April 26, 2018 Village Board meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask everybody, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and still remain standing for a moment of silence for armed forces serving throughout the world.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to make an announcement. At the end of our meeting this evening, we're going to adjourn the meeting, and we're going to have a little work session over there with the Village Board discussing some zoning issues. Jeff, I'd like you to stay and to keep televising that portion of it, but the meeting technically will be over, okay? So I just wanted to let everybody know upfront. Public is welcome to stay, but there'll be no interaction with the Village Trustees during that work session. Okay, could I have a motion to accept our minutes from our meeting held April 12, 2018?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Jess, could you please read abstract number 22?
Abstract 22 contains vouchers 17 through 17-1968 through 17-2046, and totals $169,745.71.
Thank you. Motion to approve abstract number 22?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion to approve Fire Department equipment request 2018-09 totaling approximately $136 to purchase a badge and a case for fire police.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Old business. Vote on introductory local law wireless communication moratorium. So first, I'd like a motion to declare the Village of Woodbury Board of Trustees as lead agency, and to type this as a Type II action under SECA.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Now, motion to adopt Local Law Number Two of 2018 entitled Moratorium Wireless Telecommunication Facilities to Institute a Moratorium on Certain Permits and Approvals for Wireless Telecommunication Facilities in the Village of Woodbury.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Roll call.
Trustee Michael Icheck, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Flood?
Aye.
Trustee Egan?
Aye.
Mayor Queenen?
Aye.
New business. Acceptance of Fire Department slate, Fire Chiefs. Motion to accept the following slate of officers for the Woodbury Fire Department for one year. Fire Chief Card One, Scott McLennan Jr., Fire Assistant, Fire Chief Card Two, Pat Brazillo, Second Assistant Fire Chief Card Three, Christopher Burke.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Yeah. Okay, we're going to take a brief moment to swear in the two chiefs that are here. Card Two, which is Pat Brazillo, he'll have to just stop by Village Hall and be sworn in.
(inaudible) So, I am a state inmate.
I'm Scott Burke.
Do sums where?
Do sums where?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of...
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of Chief, Second Assistant Chief.
According to my best ability.
According to my best ability.
(inaudible) 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 Thank you.
Congratulations, Scott. Congratulations. Jess, could you please read the resolution?
For the Consolidated Water Fund?
Yes.
Okay. Whereas the Water and Sewer Administrator, Michael Phillips, prepared a list of delinquent water bills on April 13, 2018, in the Village of Woodbury Consolidated Water Fund, which has been submitted to the Village Clerk, and whereas the state law allows that the Village Board adopt a resolution that the aforementioned delinquent water bills shall become liens against the property of the individual property owners, which liens shall then be taxed as part of the 2018-2019 Village Property Tax Bill, and whereas it is necessary for the Village Board to adopt such resolutions so that the county, when printing the 2018-2019 Village Property Tax Bills, may levy the delinquent water bills against the property. Now therefore be resolved that delinquent water statements submitted to the Village Board by the Village Clerk pursuant to the state law shall be forwarded to the Orange County Real Property Tax Department by the mayor so that they shall levy such sums against the property which is liable for said delinquent water statements, and shall state the amount of the tax in a separate column in the annual tax rolls for the year 2018-2019 Village Property Taxes. And be it further resolved that a copy of the resolution with the delinquent water statements shall be immediately transmitted to the county's Real Property Tax Department.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the following resolution for the levy of 694 delinquent water bills from the Consolidated Water Fund that totals $108,044.08. A complete list is on file in the Village Clerk's office.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Roll call.
Trustee Michael Icheck, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Flood?
Aye.
Trustee Egan?
Aye.
Mayor Queenen?
Aye.
Okay, we have another one. Jess, could you please read the resolution?
Whereas the Water Sewer Administrator, Michael Phillips, prepared a list of delinquent water bills for April 13, 2018, in the Village of Woodbury Water Number Six Fund, which has been submitted to the Village Clerk, and whereas the state law allows the Village Board to adopt a resolution that aforesaid delinquent water bills shall become liens against the property of the individual property owners, which liens shall then be taxed as part of the 2018-2019 Village Property Tax Bill, and whereas it is necessary for the Village Board to adopt such resolutions so that the county, when printing the 2018-2019 Village Property Tax Bills, may levy the delinquent water bills against the property. Now therefore be resolved that delinquent water statements submitted to the Village Board by the Village Clerk pursuant to state law shall be forwarded to the Orange County Real Property Tax Department by the mayor so that they shall levy such sums against the property which is liable for said delinquent water statements, and shall state the amount of the tax in a separate column in the annual tax rolls for the year 2018-2019 Village Property Taxes. And be it further resolved that a copy of the resolution with the delinquent water statements shall be immediately transmitted to the county's Real Property Tax Department. Done.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the following resolution for the levy of 20 delinquent water bills from the Amder Park Water Six Fund that totals $2,616.12, and again, a complete list is on file at the Village Clerk's office.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Roll call.
Trustee Michael Icheck, how do you vote?
Aye.
Trustee Flood?
Aye.
Trustee Egan?
Aye.
Mayor Queenen?
Aye.
Next up, we need to schedule a public hearing, so I, first of all, I'd like to, a motion to declare the Village of Woodbury Board of Trustees as lead agency, and to type this as a Type II action under SECA.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Next, I'd like, oh, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, now, I need a motion to schedule a public hearing to be held on May 10, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. to entertain public comments on introductory local law number seven of 2018, instituting a moratorium on the issuance of permits, certificates of occupancy, determinations, decisions, and approvals for hotels and/or motels.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Another public hearing scheduled, so again, may I have a motion to schedule a public hearing to be held on May 10, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. to entertain public comment on introductory local law number eight of 2018, to amend the chapter 227 of the Village Code entitled Parking Prohibited, to establish parking restrictions on Peroni Circle at the intersection of Smith Clover Road and Valley Avenue.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, we have a couple of extra items. It's rescheduling some meetings, so bear with us. So, I'd like a motion to schedule a meeting for May 14 so we can conduct interviews on applicants for the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Excuse me.
And Buddy says he's seconding it.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Also, I need a motion to reschedule our regular scheduled meeting for May 24 to be rescheduled and to be held on Tuesday, May 29.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Missed anything?
No.
Okay. Okay, that concludes our business for this evening. Like I said, after we adjourn this meeting, we will be having a work session at that table over there. The public is welcome to stay and listen. There will be no interaction with the Village Trustees, though. At this time, I'd like to go out for public comment. So anybody in the first row would like to speak on... Nobody at all?
Don't be shy.
Anybody in the second row? Anybody at all? Okay, Maria, you have anything?
Kelly?
Not yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Buddy?
I'm good, thank you.
Tom?
I have nothing.
I'm good. Other than congratulations to the chiefs. Jess?
Okay, I have a couple of things. I'll try not to make this too long. I would like to thank Dave Mestretta. He's the manager of the Woodbury Commons. He donated a couple of park benches for outside Village Hall, the entrance into Village Hall, back at Firehouse. Nice benches, sturdy, better than the benches we had prior. Also, I'd like to congratulate Samantha Armstrong for the fantastic Tricky Tray event she promoted to benefit the animal shelter. The event was very successful, and again, I'd like to congratulate Samantha. She did a great job. Also, I'm going to make an announcement here about, we have an individual who's with the Woodbury Fire Department, and he has some undiagnosed neurological disorder. But anyway, I just want to read a brief statement. There's a flyer going around, and I think it's very important that we support this endeavor to help this individual out. Seventeen years after 9/11, that day, many were lost. In fact, many first responders are still suffering to this day. Mike Hanson is one of those first responders. Mike is retired member of the New York City Police Department, was part of an elite emergency service squad. Not only did he work hard to help complete strangers on that fateful day, he also volunteered, he's also a volunteer fireman with the Woodbury Fire Department, where he has continued to serve his community. Now, as I said, Mike is suffering from an undiagnosable neurological disorder linked to 9/11. His treatments are expensive and not completely covered by his medical insurance. Additionally, he requires day-to-day care due to his limited mobility. This family has touched a lot of our lives in way or another. Whether it was just seeing him at Jay's with his beautiful grandchildren, one of his daughters, teaching your child how to swim, or just one of the Hanson clan waving hello. Please consider purchasing, they're selling t-shirts to raise money to support him. My understanding, there's going to be a lot of other events going on to raise funds to help out Mike and his family. So, but right now, the first thing that's out there is, they're selling t-shirts, and if you would like to order a t-shirt, I believe they're $20 each, and you could email teamhansonfightformike@gmail.com, or you could contact Cliff Ada with the Highland Mills Fire Company for further information. Any cash donations can be made payable to the Highland Mills Fire Company with Fight for Mike in the comments, and mail to hmfc@po162-455, New York Route 32, Highland Mills, New York 10930. So anyway, this is a great cause. Mike's a great guy. He did a lot. He always served the community. He always served, you know, his fellow, you know, citizens. So I think it's time we can pay him back by trying to help him out in his time in need. So I think this is a great cause, so please, I hope everybody gets behind it. Thank you.
Mike, thank you for reading that, because anybody who's ever met Mike Hanson will attest he's probably one of the finest human beings you'll ever meet, so anything anybody can do to help Mike and his family, I think everybody in this community should reach out and do what they can to give back.
I agree. So, okay, with that, I'm going to ask for an adjournment. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Jeff, remember to keep that camera running, and it's going to be on that table when we get cleared up. As I said earlier, anybody's welcome to stay and listen. We have no problem with that. It is, it's kind of like, it's not really a work session, but it's going to be the Village Trustees trying to hammer out some details on some zoning, and as a group, we have to be in front of the public eye, so we will be right over there at that table. Congratulations, guys. Thanks again. Bye-bye. Kelly, you're going to keep track of it, right? Yeah, so you don't have to start.
(inaudible) 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 All right, Kelly, Kelly was at the meeting with the Planning Board, and this is the remarks from the Planning Board, and we're going to go over them now, so, Kelly, I'll let you chair the meeting if you want to go through it, start at the beginning.
Sure. So the Planning Board has provided to you its recommendation recommending different changes be made to the TVZD, the Transit Village Overlay, or no, just the Transit Village District. So I provided to you a memorandum of that recommendation, and the comments that are in bold, red, and bracketed, those are the comments from the Planning Board based upon proposals that they received. So if we just start at the beginning, there were three definitions that were proposed to be included. One for brew pub, one for micro brewery winery, and the next was for the craft production. So there was an issue, and all of these items will have to be put into a local law, so it's really a discussion on if you agree with the proposed changes, if you agree with any of the Planning Board comments and want them included or addressed. We can do that, and we can provide to you a draft local law that takes these into account. So the first comment is on, that the Planning Board had was on the definition of the micro brewery winery. The Planning Board was concerned with including the word, the term "winery" in this definition, and with limiting the facility to sampling only that facility's products. A lot of times, you go someplace, and, you know, if it's a micro brewery or winery, sometimes you don't always want to drink wine. You may want to have a Coors Light, for example, or something else. So it's not unusual for someplace to also sell someone else's products, not just products from that facility that are alcoholic, that are non-alcoholic as well. And I think there was some question about, you also have a definition for farm winery in your code, so to make sure that this was different from the definition of farm winery, which requires like a larger piece of property. I think it has to be on four acres, just to make sure that there was some differentiation. So I guess I'll leave it to you as if...
Personally, I don't have a problem with any establishment selling other products besides maybe these products that they make on site. I don't have a problem with that, but I...
I don't either, but typically, and I don't object to any language change here, but typically, a micro brewery is only going to sell the beer that they brew there, like the Yard House, for example, is one particular type of establishment. I've been in many of those where they've not had your traditional bottled beers, but I don't have a problem with it.
Well, I'm not even thinking of, I'm thinking of like maybe a wine cooler, you know, sometimes, you know, you have, got to say this correctly, you know, being politically correct today. You might have some female guests there that don't want to drink, you know, brewed beer. They'd rather drink, you know, a wine cooler or something like that. That's all. I hope I did that okay. I mean, I don't think so.
I think he's preferring the wine cooler itself.
I don't have a problem with an establishment selling products from other places. Really, I have a, my question is why we're even including these in the Transit Village? To me, I see this thing expanding, expanding, and I don't even understand why you even would put a micro brewery or a winery in this Transit Village. This is supposed to be a hub by a train station that's going to be mainly residential areas with a little bit of light retail, perhaps a hotel, and the more ivory, it seems like we're trying to throw everything but the kitchen sink in here, and I think we're overdoing it a little bit.
The TVZD is actually, it's kind of meant to be like a little, almost like a little village of its own that can be self-sufficient, and I can't really say why it's there, but micro breweries do seem to be the new it thing.
Well, my understanding when we first passed this a while back was that we wanted, well, as counsel just stated, to be all-inclusive, not all-inclusive, excuse me, all self-inclusive with regard to commerce, restaurants...
I agree with that.
Places of leisure and that kind of thing. And I think what the intent with adding this type of definition in was, was to make sure that it wouldn't be exclusively prohibited, so that it would be, like a bar, a simple bar, I think.
Bars and restaurants are included. That's honestly, I...
Right.
My concern is we're going from self-inclusive to all-inclusive, and I think a lot of this is a little bit overreaching.
Well, I think it has to do with the, with the possibility of being limited by interpretation as opposed to being limited by statute or definition.
Well, I think the wording may be a little confusing to a certain degree. I mean, I don't think when they're talking about a winery, or, you know, they're talking about somebody having fields of grapes and stuff, they're just talking about maybe a place or an establishment, which some of the chic establishments even throughout Orange County today, where they, like Angry Orchard, and, well, I don't know if that's a good example, but a lot of brew pubs and bars and everything, they make their own beer. I'm not sure if they make their own wine, but even if you look at the play, a winery, they sell beer now. I don't think they make it, though.
Isn't there like a distillery up in Pine Island or something, too?
Which is, that's not my point. My point is I don't have a problem with the winery selling beer.
Right.
But my question is why we're even putting a micro brewery or a winery or a brew pub in the Transit Village?
Well, I think that's, that's what's trending.
I don't have a problem with bars, restaurants, pubs that serve wine, beer, all the, you know, I just...
But that, it is a bar. It, you know, we call it a brew pub or whatever, they brew their own beer. It's really a bar, a restaurant usually, and they brew some beer. I'm not talking about like, you know, Schlitz Brewery.
Could a bar be prohibited from brewing their own beer if it wasn't included?
I think we would have to take a look at the definition of the bar there, but it may actually prohibit that as an example. I think I finished before I was...
I would think the New York State liquor license would be the limiting piece. They give you the parameters of what a bar can and can't do. So, you know, when I look at this, I don't know where you come from, Buddy, but I look at this at broadening the range, so more economic possibilities. So from my point of view, I don't have an issue with it at this point.
I think the liquor authority, the state liquor authority, would just determine whether or not you could sell wine or beer and/or spirits. I don't think it could tell you that you could or could not brew beer, for example, but I don't know. I'm not an authority on that. I'm not an attorney.
Well, the other thing, I think this is kind of the whole idea of the Transit Village is for older folks who are downsizing, and young millennials or hipsters, whatever they call them today, I wish I was one, but I think that these are the trending things that attract young people to communities, you know, restaurants, bars, brew pubs, you know, things like that that are exciting. I mean, I don't think, I think there's brew pubs already in Orange County. They're not brewing a lot of beer. They brew just enough, really, that they sell on premises, although I realize some of them might sell to some of the local restaurants in the area, something like that, but I really don't have a problem with the, what you call it, the definition.
Okay. Well, I think the majority, just so that I can put something together for you, it sounds like the majority of you are okay with that. Obviously, you're still going to get a chance to discuss this further. It's really just to get a draft law in front of you with some direction from the board, so...
And there'll be a public meeting.
Oh, there'll be a public hearing on it, absolutely. And this will all be studied under SECA.
I think the concern here was, though, was not necessarily the term "micro brewery", but the word "winery" in that definition, right?
Mm-hmm.
This is, we're talking about, I'm, excuse me, I'm talking about the concern from the Planning Board.
From the Planning Board.
That the term "winery" was in here, and I think if that's a concern, then we take that out of this particular definition, because that's not really what we were talking about, right?
Well, I think the confusion was...
We were talking more of these little boutique wine shops that sell...
Right.
You know...
Which a bar or a micro brewery, if that mattered, would be able to sell, so...
As opposed to a wine...
As opposed to producing the wine, and the definition that we already have, and the contradiction between the current definition of winery with farmland, et cetera, versus selling wine in a micro brewery, making beer, that kind of thing.
Right.
Don't we already have a definition for winery?
That's the point, yeah.
Farm winery. A farm winery is what's defined in your code, which I believe requires four acres. I could be wrong. There's also a separate subsection of additional specifications specifically for farm wineries in your zoning code. So I think this is trying to, I think the Planning Board, part of their concern was that there could be some confusion there and also some overlap. So if there's, if you do want something like a micro winery, we would just need to tweak this language to make sure there's no confusion and no overlap.
I think the hipsters need to come up with a new word for crafting wine on a premise that you don't need property, you're bringing in grapes, and you're doing just what you do to make beer, but you're making it, you know, in a same kind of space you would make craft beer. So you need a craft winery or craft wine.
I think what we're... I, I think what we're going to come across as we go through all of these suggestions, concerns, changes, whatever, is that this is all new to us in terms of the zone, in terms of the overlay, in terms of what we were trying to accomplish when we created this prior to us ever having a developer interested in doing this. In that we wanted to create something new that would attract the businesses, the rentals, the apartments, the condos, the townhouses, the small homes, the parks, the walking, all of that, all in one place. And, and we have to think outside the box, as much as I hate that term, when it comes to making sure that we're not going to prohibit things that we just didn't think of when we craft language.
Well, if you want, I can try and suggest some language that addresses what the mayor was talking about, about alcoholic, non-alcoholic beverages that are made there and also, you know, the, the ones that are made there will be the primary ones sold, but also they'll have others that are not made there. But then also trying to address what the planning board's concern was that it sounds like this board is talking about as well. So that there's no overlap and there's a clear distinction between the farm winery and a micro winery. If I could come up with a better word, I don't know, but I think it might be confusing.
I'd be fine with you coming up with suggested language because like, like the mayor said, we're going to have a public hearing anyways.
Yeah, and you can, yeah, obviously you can always change it, but it'll give you something that addresses your concerns, their concerns.
So it's any type of craft alcoholic beverage, whether, whatever it is, to be honest. Because quite honestly, over in Warwick, you know, was it Warwick Winery or Valley, whatever it is, they make cordials now, they make whiskey, they make wine. So that's the trend. The trend is anything and everything and whatever the next latest thing. And that's where Tim's going, that you want to make it attractive enough that you have some flexibility, but we're going to need wording to address it.
Clemson Brewery actually does the same thing. They make the beers, they make the vodkas.
Right.
I'd just be concerned about getting so specific with language that we're going to box ourselves into a corner.
Right.
I will, I will take that into account and try and give you something. So the next one is craft production. The planning board was concerned with this one because it's actually something that may overlap with something that you already have defined in your code, which is a custom workshop. A custom workshop usually refers to, you know, somebody who builds little things. People usually think of a custom workshop as somebody that whittles or puts together little wooden things. It's what comes to mind, but the craft production was really aimed to include that as well as like people who make their own jewelry, people who make their own little items. I don't know what else people make. But that there could be some confusion because this includes something that you already have. So there's a few ways you could look at this. You could use it and get rid of your custom workshop. But in doing that, that would also expand where you permit custom workshops would permit craft production. Or you could separate this out to make it so that they don't overlap and word it so that it excludes what you already have as a custom workshop.
I don't disagree with that, but what I'm thinking is I kind of look at the transit oriented village down there as its own entity as far as zoning. And that's kind of how I, I always thought we would approach this. So just because we allow something down in the TOD, that does not mean we allow it all over Woodbury. I mean, I, I thought that's where we were going the whole time.
Yeah, I mean, the, the place that this would be listed, that it would be permitted as a craft production would be included and listed in the TOD regulations. I think the concern was just when that's permitted in the TOD, it just seems to overlap with something that you already permit. I mean, you could list them both if you wanted them both permitted there.
I liked your second alternative when you said you separated them out.
Okay.
That's mine.
Yeah, because would a custom workshop not be allowed in the TOD?
No, I think, I think it is allowed. It's just. Okay.
We couldn't have both.
So this would be over and above.
I'm going to give you an example. You go up the Beacon, right? It's like a TOD, a whole main street. So you look at the Glass Factory.
Exactly.
Obviously, they make their own product right there. So it's not uncommon on that street to see that kind of.
That's what I thought of. I was there making Christmas ornaments with my family one year. And that's the kind of thing that I envisioned in the TOD overlay, is that, that kind of stuff.
Okay, so.
Yeah, exactly. Whatever.
Okay, so I can do that and then list them both as being where it says craft production is permitted. And you'll see later in the memo, I'll also make sure that custom workshop is as well, but I'll clarify that definition and propose something to you.
It's possible custom workshop is dated. Or, because, well, when I look at it, maybe the, the definition of it has changed a tad.
I'll, I'll take a look at that as well and see, make sure it's still.
I think it's what Maria's looking at.
So then, those are just in the, the, the main part of the zoning code. So those definitions would apply to every zone that's in the village, but obviously they would only actually be permitted at this time in the TVZD. But the definitions would be there should you eventually want to expand and allow certain things in other districts. So then the remainder of the changes are strictly to the provisions that apply directly to the Transit Village District. And I can either go through each one or I can go through the ones the planning board had a comment on. What would you prefer?
Well, this was really a result of the planning board's discussions, right?
The red was the result of the planning board's discussions. The yellow was something that.
Just go through the yellow and red.
Okay. So one of the items is, it's the first bullet in the memo that I gave you regarding the deductions for sensitive environmental areas that's required in lot area. And the proposed language is now to include, so it'll say deductions shall be made for sensitive environmental areas as is required in the village's definition of lot area found in section three, ten, dash, two of this code, except that public utility or utility rights of way and public utility lands, which are not otherwise restricted against development such as structures, roads, or parking, need not be deducted for purposes of computing lot area. So when you're computing lot area, typically you'd remove the steep slopes, the wetlands, et cetera. And this would say, this would make it so that you don't need to then remove things like roads and parking that are already there from the lot area calculation. If anybody has anything, you can just jump in or we'll just say.
When you say the, the road is going to be a public road, right, it's going to be a village road. So you're saying that should count towards the lot area? Or it shouldn't be deducted?
It shouldn't be deducted for terms of calculating like, I'm going to use a subdivision as an example. You would typically not deduct that when you're determining the base density. But, so what they would be saying here is that when you're determining the density of whatever area that they're going to be developing, that those would not be deducted from the lot area.
And this would only be in the transit oriented?
Only in the transit oriented village. The rest of them would only be in the transit oriented village.
Well, I don't, I'm okay with it. Yeah, that, that was kind of the point, I think.
Right, I'm good.
Okay. So the next one, permitted uses that are already permitted in the district is general and medical offices. The proposal is to also include professional offices and dental offices.
Wouldn't a dental office be a medical office?
I think it was related to your definition of medical offices. So this was kind of just specifically letting that out.
We just tweaked the definition then. No, I think it's fine. Yeah, leave it then?
So the next permitted use is indoor recreation. So the proposal is indoor commercial recreation, health clubs, and health spas.
I like it. I think they fit with the, what the market will going after, young professional types or, you know, people that are going to like commute to the city and stuff like that to work, so.
Okay.
I think it fits.
So the next one is, again, permitted use in the district is restaurants or bars. The proposal is restaurants, fast food restaurants, bars, and brew pubs, any of which may have outdoor seating subject to site plan review.
I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, absolutely. No.
Okay.
Can't happen soon enough.
Well, I don't eat fast food anymore, but when I did.
I don't mean that.
I'll eat yours.
But we do have a separate definition for fast food restaurants.
I believe.
Is there a reason why we have to include that?
Honestly, I would have to check if there isn't a definition.
I don't think they permit it anywhere else in the village.
I think there is a separate definition of fast food restaurants.
Which is why we were able to carve it out.
I believe there is, but I'll, I'll double check. If there's not, I'll propose something. Let me just write that down. So the next is an additional permitted use. Train stations, including platform, parking areas, and associated amenities, facilities, and structures, police station or substation, maintenance buildings, private or, public or private bus stations, utility structures, and other essential services, including wastewater treatment plant and water treatment building.
I think we should replace police station with emergency services facilities as determined by whether it be the, the chief of service or the mayor or the planning board, something along those lines. Well, we might need a highway facility down there too, so, yeah, I mean, I totally agree, but. Well, then we would change that to say emergency services and/or public, what am I trying to say? Municipal services, facilities, as determined by need. Because in reality, where the highway department's located, if we had a building down there that had, let's say, two trucks in it, you know. For plowing those streets. Yeah, so people, when we have a snowstorm, instead of coming here, people that are assigned down there could report right there. Right. Like travel down the state highway a couple of miles to, you go down there when you can just stage a couple of vehicles there. That makes sense. And, and, you know, we don't know what we're going to need. We don't know if we're going to need a fire substation. We don't know if EMS at some point would need a substation there. You know, we don't know.
Okay. So the planning board obviously was concerned with determining the scope and the type of the police station, substation, and other emergency services, which I think you're addressing if I include emergency service facilities and/or municipal services. That's also.
Well, we have to add in as determined by somebody.
By need is what I put, but I'll.
Yeah, well, I honestly, I like that because. Yeah, it either be the planning board or the village board that would determine. Right, and those, one of those two boards or both of those boards would rely on advice of the chiefs of service or captain of the ambulance corps or whatever. Right.
And part of this was to make sure that the existing MTA police substation that's there now was permitted to continue being there. So that does, that is included in that, and I think that's part of the reason it's there. So additional permitted uses proposed are child daycare facilities and nursery schools, urgent care centers, banks and credit unions, which may have drive-through facilities, micro brewery slash winery, craft production, both of those subject to our earlier comments. Library, museum, cultural, and community facilities, open space and passive recreation, including but not limited to walking trails, community gardens, wetlands, park, and preservation areas. Neighborhood uses intrinsically necessary or suited to a transit village as determined by the code enforcement officer. This was one that the planning board had a concern with. They wanted to have this board consider the most appropriate way for this to be handled in the future. If it's by the code enforcement officer, by another consultant, by a municipal board, who's really going to be making these determinations?
Which one, number seventeen?
Number eighteen.
I think it would be the board of trustees.
That's where I'm heading. I agree with Buddy.
Yeah. I wouldn't want to leave that to one particular individual. I think the board of trustees would be the best body to make that determination at the time. My only other comment with regard to all of these bullets or numbers, I would just ask that you guys check to see if we have or need definitions for any of these terms, like urgent care center, for example. I mean, I know what an urgent care center is. I think everyone in the room does. But could that be defined differently by somebody else? And if so, do we need a definition like fast food restaurant?
Okay. The one thing, if it, if it comes back to this board, it would, would kind of make it a double process. So if they were applying to the planning board for whatever these uses are and they say, you know, we have this other use, I can't even come up with an example. And they say, well, this is a necessary neighborhood use. It's, it's intrinsically necessary or suited to this type of village. If we do put in the board of trustees, then they would have to come to the board of trustees for the board to make that determination.
I see what you're saying. So maybe it's better the planning board?
It could be the planning board, or if you didn't want to include this at all, then it would just be coming to you for a zone change, which would then be a local law with public hearings.
I'd rather not do that.
And it, right now it says code enforcement officer. That's usually who interprets the code in the first instance. So I think the planning board's just saying, think about this, think about the way you think it should be handled.
I mean, I, I was going to agree with the trustees a moment ago. What I'm asking here is, is there a way to make sure? I, I mean, I don't want to make this burdensome on the, you know, applicant where, you know, they have to, you know, costly, more time, effort, go to different boards all the time. I was wondering if it could be something that's set up where, that it could just be referred to the village board as, sometimes we, like for a site change, we get a, a letter from the engineer saying, I feel this is a field change. Unless there's an objection, I'm going to okay this. Do you know what I'm saying? Like a field, handled like a field change. I don't know if that's too liberal or, well.
I think, to be honest, I think what makes the most sense is to leave it in the interpretation hands of the code enforcement officer. But when something is applied to, obviously it's going to need site plan approval, whatever this use is. So if the, if the, they come in with this use and say that it's one of these neighborhood uses, first, the planning board would say, all right, well, we need an interpretation by the code enforcement officer. Is this one of these uses? If it's not, then they can come back to this board and ask for the law to include whatever use it is. They could appeal that to the ZBA. Or they, he could say, you know what, it is. But then the planning board says, okay, well, whatever this use is, it's subject to site plan review. And they have to go through the environmental review and the site plan review for whatever this use is.
I think what that sentence is saying is, is if there's not something already defined, the code enforcement officer would decide what is intrinsically necessary is suited to a transit village, right?
Yes, and I think one of the other things that the planning board was concerned with is that this is a very broad statement.
Yeah.
And a lot of things could be considered neighborhood uses intrinsically necessary or suited to this. So then it might be back to yours.
Right, because then I think it's ever been the code enforcement.
Well, when.
Plays to add a new use to a, to a particular zone. That's always been in the realm of the, the board of trustees.
Right.
And it wouldn't be something, in this case, where, where like a use variance released from the ZBA would be a realistic approach because of financial necessity and whatnot, so.
Well, I'm interpreting this a little differently. Obviously, the original site plan is going to be approved by the planning board. I'm, I'm looking at this as something later down the road, like, you know, two years after they get the site approval and the development's developed already and everybody's living there happily ever after. And all of a sudden, something comes up and the code enforcer is the first one on the scene. And he determines that it makes sense that this would be allowed in this, you know, zone.
Here's, here's what I'm thinking. I mean, basically what's going to happen is that there's, there's going to be structures built without predefined uses for each of those spaces, right? We're all in agreement on that? So what's going to happen then is that an applicant for a particular business or store or office or whatever is going to come before the planning board. Still correct? So the planning board would then determine, so if it was saying planning board instead of code enforcement officer, the planning board would make a determination as to whether or not that use fit within the zone. If they made a determination that the applicant didn't agree with, then the applicant goes to the ZBA. But up until that point, there's no additional board appearances, no additional expense by the applicant, no additional expense by anybody.
Yeah, but how it really works today is the first person they go see is the code enforcement officer. See? So that's why we have to define this, yeah.
And then he says.
He says, you know, it's good.
Within that use, go before the ZBA.
Right. Or he could say, well, you're going to need to go in front of the planning board or one of the, or he could say it's good. So that's the issue there.
So I guess it's up to, to you if you want to have this as an interpretation for the code enforcement officer or if you think it is something that is outside of his realm because you think it expands his authority to allowing certain uses that you want this board to.
And for that reason, I go back. And for that reason, I go back to my earlier statement that we need to make sure.
Just remove this in its entirety.
Well, that's, I'm, because just by the nature of having this included, it would, would imply that you're, you're adding a use or new use that's not already defined in the zone. In which case, of course, it goes to the code enforcement. He says, no, that's not allowed in this zone. So the code enforcement officer would not be allowed to add a new use. But he would determine whether or not he thought that use was already allowed in that zone. If not, it would go to the ZBA for an interpretation, or not, then they would have to come for a zone change.
Yeah, I, I kinda agree with that.
So take this one out.
Yeah, that was my question. You saying taking it out or leaving it as is?
I think just by putting it in, yeah, it's like, yeah, I think.
It's too broad.
It's too broad, no reason to have it there. It's just like any other zone.
So you're saying take it out?
If you come and you determine that there's a intrinsic need, that's not, or, or that you feel is allowed in the zone, that isn't, you go to the code enforcement agent. For a interpretation. If you don't agree with his interpretation, you go to the zoning board.
So another way of saying it is that we don't need the statement in there because the code enforcement officer's gonna make that determination anyway.
Right, and that could happen in any zone.
Well, that's true too.
Okay, so I will take that one out. Um, the next one is lengthy. And just to start, the introductory sentence had started with accessory uses, buildings and structures, which may be accessory to a specific principal use. Or to a transit village generally, such as. And the Planning Board thought it would be appropriate to insert, in addition to accessory uses as defined in section three ten dash two. That way, it actually makes sense to in, include that. It's in addition to how the accessory uses are defined. That way, this list is not, um, exclu- exclusive. It's not just these. It's if the building inspector makes the determination that something is an accessory use, like you're saying, then it would be permitted as an accessory use.
Like a pop-up restaurant for a regular restaurant, that kind of thing.
Right. So he would be able to make that, and that just kind of clarifies the beginning. Which really responds to the Planning Board's concern in subsection N. In this, uh, sub, subsection N of this nineteen. Which includes other accessory uses in buildings, which meet the definition of accessory use or accessory building pursuant to three ten dash two. As determined by the code enforcement officer. So the Planning Board thought that that should be removed, N should be removed, and it was really covered by this introductory language.
I would agree with that.
So, jumping back up to the top. Um, some of the proposed accessory uses that are being listed. Home occupations, building and structures incidental to a principal use. ATMs, childcare within or associated with a principal permitted use such as an office or health club. Restaurants and fast food restaurants within a principal permitted use, such as a health club or bookstore. Electric vehicle charging stations, car sharing and short-term automobile rental. Outdoor pop-up restaurants, including food preparation, heating and cooking, associated with a permanent or permanent restaurant or fast food restaurant. Here, the Planning Board thought that pop-up restaurant has to have a definition. Um, and it should be clarified as to whether this includes food trucks. Pop-up restaurants are one of those new things.
So the, um, when I read it, are you saying that the pop-up restaurant is associated to a restaurant or fast food? Um, establishment in the TOD?
Uh, typically, yeah.
No, we can't say, well, okay.
Well, no, I, I mean, my response is, we, there would need to be a definition. But when I first saw this, to be honest, I didn't know what a pop-up restaurant was.
My feeling is if, uh, that, um, it should only be from a restaurant or fast food that's there in the TOD because they're paying taxes, and the, a pop-up can't just pop in.
Well, I, no, yeah, I agree with you, Tom. I think that's the intent. My, my.
Right, plus they're listed as accessory.
But now that gets, the next thing is the food truck, right?
I think that's separate and should be treated as such. Uh, uh, and if we wanted food trucks in there, then we add food trucks in there and add a definition for food trucks as well. Although we probably already have one considering they're at the common now, right?
No, they don't have, well, they do have food trucks.
But I don't believe it's defined. But this was a little concern just because people didn't want, or they don't think the Planning Board wanted, you know, the streets of the TVZD lined with food trucks all the time.
I think that concern is born from the fact that none of us really know what a pop-up restaurant is.
Well, can't get more pop-up than a food truck, because it pulls right in and it's there. But my point is, I, I, I think we should define, uh, food trucks, but maybe not in the TOD. But maybe somewhere else on its own, because I'm not really sure we have that.
And just use the same term in the TOD zone. Yeah, I agree. As an accessory use, but, but pop-ups we need to define. I mean, when, when I heard this come up during the Planning Board meeting, uh, I was quickly Googling what a pop-up, uh, restaurant was, and I came up with, uh, several different things, some of which were contradictory. I mean, it's, it, we really need some research on that and some, some, we do need a definition. We need to know what that is. My understanding, based on conversations and based on research and Googling and that kind of thing, was that it would be not, not a Chili's or something like that, but a, 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 there used to be a hot dog place down on Smith Clove Road. I don't remember the name of it. But if he had, uh, uh, tables outside with a hot dog cart in addition to his regular hot dog restaurant, that, that's what I envisioned in my mind. I don't know if that's right or not, but that's what I thought of.
So the part, I, I know Dennis Lindsay at that meeting had come up with something, but I missed it.
He did, yeah.
It had to do with margaritas, but I missed it.
Did you miss it because?
I got distracted by the word margaritas. But, um, what I understand them to be is if, I'll use Applebee's, for example. They wanna try something out that's new. Instead of mozzarella sticks, they're thinking of fried pickles. And they think, oh, let me just do a pop-up restaurant here. Try something new for people to get. Doesn't always have to be new, but that's what I understand it to be. It's temporary. It's like, here's a quick little thing. We're testing out something new. That doesn't necessarily limit to this. It could be a recurring basis. Um, but I, we would provide you with a definition, because I think this board is saying you need a definition.
I'd be very careful with that term, pop-up restaurant, because I, I agree. I think, I, I think it might have been Tim or Buddy that said, uh, it might have been Tom, actually, that if, if, no, if you're gonna have some.
Probably one of those.
Could have been. I, I, I'm pretty much covered because I named everybody. But I, I'm saying, like, like you said, Applebee's. Well, if, if Applebee's is in the TOD, then they could probably be allowed to do something outside.
That was Tom.
But, uh, I'm thinking, you know, pop-up restaurant, I really don't understand, like, you know, what are they gonna put up a tent? Put a cookers in there, or is it just gonna be, you know, a sampling table?
You don't wanna see Applebee's coming up with a cart in the TOD when they're not there in the first place.
That's what I mean.
What it's probably referencing is if you go to, um, a fair, a, a street fair or something like that. You'll have not only food trucks, but you'll have temporary pop-up, uh, food establishments come in. And they'll set up, and that's why you said the mariga, margarita. You set up the margarita bar. You'll set up, uh, you know, the pastrami sta- uh, bar, whatever, you know.
Cotton candy.
It could be. So that's probably where they're heading. Uh, it, it probably should be defined in, um, you know.
Well, considering this being talked about as an accessory use, it would have to be associated with an existing restaurant in the TOD, right?
But I can include that in the definition so that it's clear. But you're right. You're absolutely right. Um, so what about food trucks? Well, I'll make sure that they are excluded from that definition, but is food trucks something that you wanted here? It's not being proposed. I just, it was a concern that pop-up restaurants, whether or not that included food trucks. And if it's not gonna include food trucks, are food trucks an accessory use that you want permitted here?
I don't think.
We have to be very careful with food trucks because, as, uh, Tom said, that the people down there who are in brick and mortar businesses are paying taxes. So, uh, if we define food trucks, I think we really need to separate it out, and it should be very stringent. And also, we may wanna put a caveat in there as far as it can be only, you know, for veterans or something along those lines. I mean, I don't know if we could even do that, but.
In addition to that, I think food trucks outside of the TOD, and, 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 and that's prob- and because I said that, that's probably outside of this conversation.
Right.
I think we need to have further conversation with regard to the subject of food trucks, and possibly special permits or something along those lines. Uh, special application, something. I don't know what I'm thinking, but.
No, I agree.
But it, like I said, once again, it's probably more geared, uh, this TOD, uh, I keep calling it TOD. There's more, there's more, uh.
TOD is fine.
But, um, I, I think the intention is that there's gonna be things like street fairs and things like that. And when you have that, then you're gonna have a food truck, or, you know, the mozzarella truck, or whatever, so, um.
That could be in the definition now.
Yeah, so we just have to account for it.
allowable at.
Right.
Street fairs or things like that.
Exactly.
Which would not be in this section because it wouldn't be an accessory use then.
Right. Right.
I'll have to find a place for that.
Right.
And normally with a street fair or something, wouldn't you need like a special permit?
Yeah.
Bring in.
Right.
Depends, public assembly.
Right, but I, I, I'm not sure, but I don't think food trucks now require a special permit.
Well, we, we don't really have any.
That's my point. Well, wait, we don't have any food trucks?
Maybe something that we just don't include.
Yeah, well, that's, that's a whole different animal. That ain't for the Planning Board, so I'm not sure.
Okay. I don't wanna get hung up on this.
Is that private property?
Yeah, well.
That's true.
I would be more ticked off if I was a restaurant there, so.
Well, I'll, I'll figure something out with that one. So the next one's outdoor seating associated with craft production or with a retail use such as a delicatessen bakery or other store selling prepared foods. Recreational facilities associated with townhouses and apartments for use by their residents and guests, such as indoor and outdoor swimming pools, hot tubs, clubhouses, courts for tennis, basketball, volleyball, and other sports, walking paths, fitness center. Permanent project amenities such as kiosks, gazebos, playgrounds, tot lots, benches, street furniture. Workout stations, bike paths, decorative walls, and berms, lighting, sheds, dog park.
You probably should add old lot, you know, for us older guys. Tot lot.
Uh, seasonal or temporary project amenities such as an ice rink, farmer's market, or amphitheater. The next one, outdoor sale, display, or storage of merchandise subject to a special permit issued by the Planning Board in consideration of the criteria in section three ten dash twenty-four. I can't recall what that section says.
I was just gonna ask you that.
The Planning Board thinks that this section should be removed.
Do you know why?
There was discussion about a lot of, um, everything being on the sidewalk and constantly walking down. And there's always, like, you know, when you walk down the street and it's just constant, everything's outside. Then it really removes the part where everybody can just walk around. It's taking up the entire sidewalk. Why are they allowed to store merchandise on the sidewalk?
Well, if you. If subject to special permit, like, you go down in Warwick, they have their annual sidewalk sale where everybody, for that one day or that weekend.
Issued by who?
Put their racks, uh, on the street, you know, uh, so.
He stole my thunder, so I was gonna bring him.
Special permit?
The, the Village of Warwick.
Well, I would imagine, yeah. In this case.
No, he's talking about Warwick, and he said, who wishes the special permit? The Village of Warwick. What I'm saying is. Oh, then it would be.
I don't care.
This one would be, uh, by the Planning Board.
Right. But I mean, I, I don't know if this should be removed, because if you go to villages, uh, throughout Orange County, Dutch's. Uh, villages that are very trendy always have these, as Buddy brought out, you know, these sidewalk sales. So maybe that needs to be, you know, tightened up, but I don't know if it.
Maybe we can look at, like, Warwick's Code, for example. I mean, you walk down Main Street in Warwick, they have a clothing rack outside of a clothing store. But not all over the sidewalk, that kind of thing.
And they don't do it all the time. I think at specific times of the year.
So, I, I mean, I see the word here, storage. I mean, we shouldn't have storage out there. It's obvious. So that's what Mike said, tighten it up.
Right. Sale and display of merchandise, subject to a special permit. I don't, I don't have a problem with it. It's a special permit use, and it's not a constant, everyday, the sidewalks are cluttered with.
Well, there should be rules where, you know, there has to be like, uh, a five-foot swath where people can walk by, or six feet. I don't know what the.
That's why I said we look at what else is already out there, and, you know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel here. And I, you know, if, uh, did it, would they have to get a special permit every Saturday, every Sunday, every weekend? I mean. Let's see what, let's see what's out there.
It's probably the same kind of thing like a farmer's market.
Right.
Right, so you're gonna give them a permit for.
The season?
A duration of time. You know.
Let's see what's out there.
May of September, that kind of thing. But, okay.
And then we already agreed to remove number, uh, letter N. The Planning Board did say that the Board of Trustees should reconcile this proposed subsection nineteen with the general de- definition provided in section three ten dash two to provide clarity. I think that's what you have done up at the top. Um, so the next one is that bike parting, bike parking shall be provided in close proximity to the train station. That's what your code currently requires. Is proposed to say, unless prohibited by Metro North Commuter Railroad. An applicant shall be deemed to have complied with this requirement if the applicant provides evidence to the Planning Board that it has sought permission to install bike racks on the station property in close proximity to the station platform. And certifies that no response has been received after a reasonable time. The Planning Board, exactly. The Planning Board was concerned with what a reasonable time was, and said it should be clarified to state a reasonable time under the circumstances as determined by the Planning Board.
So we're aware that, uh, there's new bike services now that don't provide racks.
Like a kickstand?
So we're, we're taking that into account.
Starting in Brooklyn or something.
Yeah. It's, it's gonna be chaos.
Well, I guess we'll modify it when that moves up, up this way. Um, so the next part in your code says condo and rental apartment units shall only be located on upper floors of mixed-use buildings. The fire department should be consulted to determine the maximum building height that can be accommodated safely in this area. Is proposed to be modified to condo and rental apartment units may be located on upper floors of mixed-use buildings. Or in residential buildings, residential-only buildings, so long as at least fifty percent of the gross building footprint within the core area consists of mixed-use buildings containing non-residential uses on the ground floor and residential uses on the upper floors.
I agree with that. And striking, the fire department shall be consulted because, you know, we're dealing with that later in the code. In terms of height.
So then there are three sections, which, exactly, which are dealing with the height. Um, and I had provided to the board a copy of, like, a redlined local law where it would show where these changes were. From what you, what you currently have, that I had, I had provided to the Planning Board as well. Basically, in these three subsections, D two B, D three G, and D three H. The language is revised to state that it permits the height of structures to be increased to sixty feet. So the Planning Board was concerned and said that this should be exclusive of mechanical structures or facilities which must be screened.
Just to be clear, meaning that an elevator, uh, containment room, I guess. On top of the building could be higher than the sixty feet, but would have to be screened.
Yes.
So that could be seventy feet in that particular instance, or sixty-eight feet, or whatever.
Yes, or like an HVAC up there.
Just so I'm understanding what the intent is. Or HVAC, right.
Makes sense.
Well, we, we're gonna have to run that by the fire department again, because we, in discussions with them, they were okay with sixty feet. Uh, obviously, they require a new ladder truck for that, that hundred-foot ladder truck. But, uh, now, excuse me. Now, if we're gonna allow a building to be sixty feet, and then another additional ten feet, uh, for infrastructure and, and.
We're not actually identifying how high that infrastructure can be. We're just saying that it can be above the sixty feet as long as it's screened.
Yeah, I think that discussion, I, I don't think anybody has a problem. Excuse me. With the sixty feet, but I, I thought sixty feet was kinda like the limit, but we'll, we'll have to check that with the fire department.
So just to be clear, you think the sixty feet wa- was to be inclusive.
Well, our current code is.
Rooftop structures.
Our current code is.
I believe that.
Thirty-five feet inclusive of.
We ran into that with.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we?
Garage at Woodbury.
The, if I recall, the Planning Board suggested that it be exclusive of, correct?
Yes.
So why don't we stick with that for now? In the meantime, prior to public hearing, we seek input from the fire department, obviously. Uh, and then discuss it at the, uh, you know, at the public hearing.
Well, then I think we have to also then define how high they can go above that sixty feet.
That's what I was wondering too, but I don't know that we can, because we, who are we to determine how high mechanical, uh, structures could be on top of the building?
You are the one that.
We are the ones, yeah.
Yeah.
And you have to set someone.
It's not just height. It's, it, the most important thing is, is it accessible to save someone uh, and or save the structure? Right? That's the whole idea of, of the, of the height of the ladder, I think, right?
And I think the, the screening part.
That's the idea of the height of the ladder.
More with air conditioning units and that kind of stuff as opposed to.
In a building, we'll have to meet all.
Elevator shafts.
Right.
Elevator shafts that are gonna, you know.
In the building, we'll have to meet all the standards for building that high, you know, with a inside stairwell that's fire-resistant, fire-resistant doors, sprinklers.
Sprinklers, stand pipes, all of that stuff, yeah.
I, I can't imagine any other, uh, equipments, uh, that are gonna be on the rooftop that would have to be any higher than the elevator. Shaft, so probably if you could determine what the maximum height needed.
Well, look, any, any city with a million or more people has buildings that exceed the height of the highest ladder from the fire department. I mean, there, there, there's no such thing as a ladder truck that can reach, you know, any of these higher buildings. Whether it's ten stories, twenty stories, they don't do rescues with helicopters.
Sure they do, don't you watch movies?
No, but that's where the other fire codes come into play with, with sprinklers and stand pipes and, as you were talking about, fire-resistant elevator shaft, or. Elevator shafts, doors, and stairwells and all of that stuff. So, uh, none of us are experts with regard to that, so I, I don't think that we should necessarily tie the height of the building to the height of the ladder in the fire, in the fire department, for example. I guess that's my point.
Well, I can tell you that this will be passed by the fire department. Um, they are going to be referred every piece of the, um, the environmental review. We've listed them as an interested agency as well as the other emergency service agencies. But for purposes of putting together a draft local law for you, what's the consensus of either inclusive of mechanicals?
Right.
Or exclusive, which must be screened, no greater than ten feet in height? I don't actually know how big elevators.
If we were gonna say exclusive and then put a height on the mechanicals, I would want to get input, further input from Dennis on that. Because he would have a better idea of what the average height of these mechanicals are. Because if we say no higher than six feet, and then for a building that size, it's impossible to get an HVAC unit that's less than eight feet, for example. I don't know, I have no idea, but I, I, we're not in a position to make that determination, if we're going to say exclusive and then put a, put a cap on it.
Then wouldn't we have to then define, and we have sixty feet in building height and then no higher than.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Two feet, including mechanicals.
I'm kind, I'm kind of leaning the sixty feet total, but.
Inclusive.
Inclusive of everything.
Cause the planning board recommended exclusive.
I noted it.
Okay.
You can do.
Say a four-story building or, or a four-story hotel.
I think you could get a five-story building or not.
Well, typically ten feet a floor, right?
That'd be fifty feet, and then you got your.
I don't have a problem with limiting it at sixty feet.
And you can always change it going forward if you.
That's a. Well, we're limited at sixty feet, so they have a total of sixty feet.
About an eighty percent increase if they are covering, so, so, I, I think that's more than reasonable.
And, and just as a reminder, it's not a final decision, it's just direction.
And like, listen, I'm just.
My only hesitation, and, and I'm thinking back to presentations that we've had as a board by hotel, uh, uh, designers or hotel, uh, uh, management. Uh, and I'm thinking in terms of the height of the first floor, as it would be subtracted from the total building height, which would allow only a certain number of rooms, and then a hotel would not be profitable unless it had more than that certain number of rooms in the footprint, you know, that kind of thing. That, that's what I'm concerned about. I, I, I don't know if it would make a difference if we said sixty feet inclusive or sixty feet exclusive with another twelve feet, or, I, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question. So as long as we keep that in mind when we make a decision now as to what we think should be in the preliminary, uh, uh, code, and we keep that in mind when it comes to further discussion and that, that could be subject to change, I'm okay with it. Fair enough?
We, we, we recently had a proposal before our board for a hotel.
That's my point.
Sixty feet was the.
Right, but they were saying that their concern was that they couldn't get enough rooms in there to make it a profitable venture.
No, they said they had, they needed sixty feet in order to make it.
Oh, we, we had two different ones, so maybe we're thinking of two.
We actually had three, but.
You get my point.
I, I have an open mind on this.
Good, okay.
But, you know, uh, right now, I think, uh, we're giving a lot at sixty feet, being at our current.
It's thirty-five, yeah.
And, and we did agree to work with hotels to attract them, uh, in certain areas. Uh, and I, I realize the T O D is a different entity to itself. Uh, and again, like I said, I have an open mind, but right now I kind of feel, uh, we're being, uh, extremely fair at sixty feet, but, you know, I'm willing to listen to anybody's argument, you know.
So for purposes of right now, I'll put it as a inclusive of mechanical structures and, or facilities. Okay, so the next one is subsection D three C, which currently says the corner or end of a mixed-use building should be designed as a focal point, and the proposed revision is each mixed-use building should be designed to have a focal point. The planning board's statement is that should, in that statement, should be shall. Should, should be shall, and, oh, you know what I'm trying to say.
Oh, I see, okay.
So that each mixed-use building has to have a focal point, rather than the corner or end.
Well, just so I understand better, what's the really difference between should and shall?
Well, shall means it has to.
And so does.
Should means it doesn't necessarily have to.
I don't know, I hear should, I kind of mean.
Should gives wiggle room, in my opinion. Shall takes the wiggle room out. But my, well, my question is, what constitutes a building? I mean, I, I'm thinking of city blocks down in the city. Is that one large building, or is each entrance its own building?
Each section block and lot number, I guess.
Um, well, I guess, it depends really on how it's, how it's developed, if it's gonna be, you know, one whole block is a building. But usually when you go to the city, there is a wall separating each building.
Firewall.
Yeah, so that would be the building.
Do we have a definition for focal point?
No, you do not.
Well, that's the other thing. What is it, what are we talking about when we talk about?
I would say the entrance to the building would be a focal point, wouldn't it?
Typically, I mean, if you look.
Or a clock. So then, are we saying they, if we say should, they don't have to have entrances?
It's not, I mean, it's not just an entrance, if, if you look at a big residential building, uh, for example, and you go and it usually happens to be an entrance, but it has a, you know, a dome, and then it has something fancy. It's something really to attract your eyesight to, so you're not just looking at, you know, a flat brick wall. You're looking at this intricate thing.
Oh, one example. One example I could think of is there's a relatively new hotel downtown Albany that, that's a Hampton Inn, basically. But it's a building that's tucked behind another building, and there's a little tiny walkway to get to the entrance of that building. Is that the focal point? I mean, I'm, you obviously don't know the building I'm speaking of unless you've been there recently, but.
No, I, actually, I would say that that, that is not the focal point.
And I think that's what we're talking about here, right?
But I think.
So we'd wanna make sure something like that couldn't happen. Is that what we're saying when we say shall instead of should?
Right, you would wanna make sure that there is a focal point, and I think this is where the, the planning board, as the ARB as well, would have to make that determination of, is whatever they're proposing as the focal point, is that a focal point? And if it's a tiny little thing like that.
Right.
The planning board likely, I don't know what they're.
To me, that hotel looks odd, as an example.
Is the purpose of, uh, the word focal point to, um, get the architecture to have some kind of, um, theme or, um.
To make it look better and more like a village.
Also, y- y- yeah, right, I mean, there's a.
And better's not the right word.
Yeah, and nor is theme, but, uh, where I'm going is, is that it, it obviously makes sense because the focal point, I, I, I mean, right away, I think at Disneyland, you know, there's focal points in different.
Kind, to make it attractive, to make each building, each building attractive.
Right.
I- is there a generally accepted term called focal point in building code or zoning code or?
No, it's when you would look towards, I forget which edition your code refers to, but Merriam-Webster's dictionary, you'd go to that one. And that's where the planning board would then be referred to.
So I guess really, basically, that the building has a, a point, like, when you, when you look at the building, your eyes are drawn to something in the building. That would be a focal point, and obviously, it's aesthetic and, and you want it to look, you know, nice.
Right.
So before it said the corner or end of a mixed-use building should be designed, should be designed to have a focal point. Now what's being proposed is, and I'm sorry, is this a planning board recommended change? I don't, I don't remember.
The word shall.
The word shall.
The word shall is a planning board recommended change. Where did the strike throughs come from?
Uh, those were a suggestion of the applicant, but they went to the planning board to see what the planning board recommended. The planning board agreed with this change, except that should should be shall.
I see.
And I guess an example of this is if you do have that multifamily or residential townhouse building, that, you know, the end or the corner may not be the appropriate place for that. And this kind of gives the planning board the, the leniency and still the authority to determine where the appropriate focal point is.
Well, I'm good with shall.
Say again?
I'm good with shall. We knew you'd come around. Listen, I just, you know, I'm open-minded.
Well, I think that's the opposite, actually.
Well, it gives, it, this actually, this change gives the planning board more flexibility to assist in the design.
Saying shall gives them more flexibility?
By changing it from the corner or end to.
Oh, that, yeah, that I agree with, yeah.
Gives them more flexibility. The shall makes sure that they.
They shall have a focal point.
That one's more restrictive on the applicant, that they have to have one, but it, this change is more, gives more flexibility to the planning board to determine what's appropriate.
Is it that, or is it, I mean, obviously, if it's a mixed-use building, there's, there's kind of a business or something going on there. And why wouldn't you wanna have a focal point to draw people to your building?
Sure.
Whereas the reason for us putting it on the corner at the end is so it's not just a square old brick corner, but it adds a little bit more.
Well, I'm past the corner versus.
Architecture to the building to make it look.
What I, what I'm focusing on, no pun intended, is shall versus should. That's what I'm trying to figure out. Apparently we have, okay.
Everybody's good with shall?
I'm a shall guy.
Okay.
Cause we couldn't use may.
Um, so the next one is D three D, which currently says at least seventy-five percent of a street facade on a ground-floor use of a mixed-use building shall be clear glass window. It's proposed to say at least fifty percent of any street facade on a ground-floor use of mixed-use buildings should be clear glass window.
I personally think there should be more flexibility in, in this for the. Well, that, still fifty percent is a lot. I think the planning board should have, uh, some flexibility here because sometimes it may not make sense for a building to be fifty percent glass. That's all I'm saying. I mean, I, I think, I wouldn't lock us.
So you're saying reduce it further?
Well, I'm saying make it where the planning board has some flexibility based on the design of the building or the business.
Right, right, so you're saying that, and I think that's part of the reason why the planning board kept should here. Because if they come back and say that, you know, there's, you know, there's a reason why it's a, a safety concern or something, I, I.
So should gives wiggle room again, like we were talking about earlier.
Little bit of.
So is a mixed-use building a school?
No, a mixed-use building's like retail.
No, I'm just making sure, cause obviously, in a school, I would not want fifty, you know, I, that's safety concern right away.
But even if it was, should be, so it could be less.
And, and the planning board would really have to make a finding for those as to why, because it should, it, it should be this way, but the planning board would then make a finding basically as to why it's not appropriate in that situation.
Right, that's, I want them to have that flexibility.
At least fifty percent.
Yeah. Um, so the next one says that no detached sign shall be permitted in mixed-use area, in the mixed-use area. It's proposed to be amended to include, except that each access point providing ingress from Route seventeen, whether or not within the mixed-use area, may have an illuminated freestanding sign, each of which shall not exceed fifty square feet in sign area per side identifying the Transit Village Project. Such signs shall otherwise comply with the dimensional requirements of section three ten dash thirty. Other signage within the Transit Village zoning district shall be governed by design guidelines to be approved by the planning board, generally in accordance with the sign standards for the Hamlet Business District.
Three ten thirty is our sign code, right?
I'm good with that.
Okay. Uh, D seven is a new section, which would state, notwithstanding the requirements of section three ten dash eight, buildings not on map streets, and section three ten dash eleven D, maximum size of accessory buildings. And there's a parentheses that's supposed to be there. The planning board, as part of site plan review, shall determine the appropriate size, access, location, and orientation of accessory buildings for non-residential uses in the Transit Village zoning district. Okay, so then subsection E, uh, sets forth, and I, I won't read all of these to you, but it sets forth the parking standards for child daycare and nursery schools, urgent care, libraries, museums, health clubs or health spas, fast food restaurants, brew pub, microbrewery, winery, and craft production. Um, you also did receive a memo, uh, the planning board was fine with these, subject to Dennis Lindsay's comments. He did have a few comments that he submitted in a memo dated April eleventh, um, with just some recommendations that he made for commercial recreation, whoops, sorry, uh, health, fitness club, fast food restaurants, brew pub, and microbrewery slash winery.
We have the same code for Woodbury Commons?
On the parking?
Mm-hmm.
I don't think that these, for, the majority of these would apply to Woodbury Commons.
I'm asking because, uh, it's funny, before you even started, I'm going, is there gonna be parking for the employees?
Oh, I mean, there's, there is.
Uh, you know, I, I mean.
Yeah, if I recall, parking for the employees was mixed with parking for residents because the employees would not be there at the same time as the residents when they got home from work at night or something like that. Am I remembering that correctly?
Yeah, and because a lot of them would be basically taking the train down to the city.
Exactly.
But also, some of the residents are gonna work in the area. And you could work in the area and ride your bike.
And a lot of the restaurants and brew pubs and everything are gonna still be open in the evening when the people are home from work, so.
I just want there to be enough parking.
If these are proposed, um, Dennis had changed.
Cause that's when chaos comes into a community, is when there's no.
There's not enough parking.
But then there's a seasonal employee. That's where the problem comes. Okay, keep going, I'm sorry.
So whichever way you wanna go, if you wanna go with what's proposed, or if you want to go with.
I'm not changing anything, I'm just.
There are other changes in Dennis's memo that aren't included here, is that me?
Yes, um.
I do have confidence in Dennis, cause I, I was just about to say, uh, I don't think any of us on the board here have any expertise on determining the number of parking spaces for a business, so I would, uh, you know, uh, concede to, to the consultants, so if Dennis has recommendations, I would most likely go along with them.
Okay, and again, if he, after consideration, suggests something different, it can always be changed in the future. Um, subsection E one, uh, says shared parking is encouraged in mixed-use areas. The planning board is hereby given the authority to waive any or all of a use's parking requirements in the mixed-use core area. If a parking structure or surface parking lot with adequate capacity is located within five hundred feet of the subject use, or the planning board finds adequate on-street parking is available, that's proposed to be revised to, uh, with adequate capacity is located within a reasonable distance within the core area, or the planning board finds adequate on-street parking is available. Again, the planning board questioned a reasonable distance and said that that should be clarified to say a reasonable distance under the circumstances as determined by the planning board.
Somebody has to determine it.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's either, it's either we let the planning board determine it, or we put a finite, which, which may not work in every area, so I'm.
This gives them again that.
Gives them wiggle room, yeah, I'm good with that.
So then there are four new subsections. The first is parking need not be located on the same lot as the use it serves. However, parking to serve the core area must be located within the core area, and parking to serve areas outside the core area must be located outside the core area.
We've used that term core area a couple times now. Have we defined that?
Yes, it's within a, it's a half-mile radius circle. It's actually shown, if you look at the plans for the current applicant, it shows where the core area is, so the, the application, well, it's on there.
Yeah, that makes sense. It's kind of like the commute a lot for this building right here, I mean, it's, we've been just.
But that answers my question from before, too, so.
Okay. Um, number five, outdoor seating areas associated with craft production or with retail use such as a delicatessen bakery or other store. or with retail use such as a delicatessen bakery or other stores selling prepared foods shall be excluded. The planning board thinks that this should include, when computing the required number of parking spaces, only to the extent that the number of outdoor seats does not exceed twenty-five seats or twenty-five percent of the number of interior seats, whichever is greater. Any outdoor seating which exceeds the greater of twenty-five seats or twenty-five percent of the number of interior seats shall be included when computing the required number of parking spaces based on the ground area occupied by such outdoor seating. So I think, this is also language, sorry.
Who came up with this language?
Dennis.
So that's the standard?
Well, it's, it's typically included for things, and you'll see, it's, it's in number six, which is very similar, but that's for outdoor seating for restaurants, fast food restaurants, bars, and brew pubs.
So that's the rule of thumb.
For those type of uses, I think that the reason it was likely left off of this
Makes sense.
is because delicatessens, bakeries, or other stores, like a, like a deli usually doesn't bring in as many people as the others, and they have less interior seats. But the planning board, uh, made this recommendation that it be the same as those below.
Great, well. Delicatessens, bakeries, things like that, I don't really, uh, see people staying there a long period of time. Usually you go into a bakery, you get what you need and you go, or a delicatessen. I mean, um, our cameraman just fell off his chair, but, um.
That statement alone wasn't enough to make him do that, is that what?
But I'm, I'm just saying, I, I, I don't know if it's overkill because, uh.
That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, the, I mean, I guess if it's a bakery that, that has seating where people can be served and sitting there. So again, this should be a little flexible, maybe up to the discretion of the planning board. But I don't know if we need to lock them into a certain amount of parking.
I, yeah, I agree with what you're going, where you're going with that, because what we're saying here is that these types of facilities, delicatessens, bakeries, et cetera, we're, we're, it sounds like we're making them have more parking than they would need.
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
By adding this statement in.
But, well, if they're gonna have outdoor seating, and obviously, well, you do have to regulate it somewhat, I mean, obviously, cause outdoor seating's not gonna be around. But if you seat forty people inside and you are only required to have the parking for that, and then you put enough seating outside for another twenty people, now you've increased the, the number of spots you would need by fifty percent.
So what you're saying is if they.
Because you can, you can now serve fifty percent more customers.
If they don't put outdoor seating in, then it wouldn't apply anyway, right?
Right, but if you are gonna have outdoor seating, you need to have parking to cover the people, the additional.
That makes sense. So that kind of, uh, uh, nullifies what Mike was saying, in that if these, if the, if these facilities, if these, uh, stores, whatever, uh, uh, don't have outdoor seating, you're saying that it doesn't matter because it's not gonna be calculated in.
Well, let's take an example like Danny's Market down there.
Yeah.
If there's a, a deli down in a transit-oriented village, like Danny's Market, uh, he, he's really, that, that store is not gonna need that kind of parking, cause people are going in there, getting a sandwich and leaving. It's not like this.
With the Chinese restaurant right next door, would it?
But.
But I, I mean, I'm, I don't, I don't disagree with you, but I'm, what I'm saying is that the planning board, depending on the square footage of the facility, how many tables they might have, may wanna relax the parking based on, some businesses are like, you know, you go in, you buy it and go. It's not like you, you sit there and dine.
But then they.
So it should be in their discussion.
They might have to limit the, the amount of outdoor seating they're allowed to have.
Well, yeah, I mean.
Well, that couple.
So what if it's a, uh, what if it's a specialty deli? That, um, let's say it's an Italian deli that brings imports, et cetera. So it's got cheese section, meat section, all these things, and it's gonna attract, uh, quite a lot of people. They're not gonna be sitting, right? Although that could be an option elsewhere, but, you know, but it, it's gonna attract a lot of people. Especially in the holidays, things like that. Do we account?
Would that not come up during the planning board application and then be determined by the planning board, as Mike said?
Probably, and, and that's, that would be fine. Just wanna account for it.
Sounds delicious.
I know. I, I, I love to eat. The fact that I.
Like a larger version of political.
Yeah, I have your delis where people just go in and get a, a quarter pound of cold cuts and cheese and whatever and go. Or, you know, you can go to Jay's and they have all the seating here in the front with maybe eight or ten tables. But the vibe of this is to attract that kinda store, um.
Right, yeah, I agree with that.
Right. And, but, well. Nothing against Dennis, and Dennis might change his, you know, his, his whole approach.
And start having cheese section and bread section.
So do you, after that, do you want this included that the planning board suggested or not? Just so I have a little bit of direction.
Yeah, I had to go back.
Well, it sounds like the planning board is suggesting that we more clearly define how much parking would be required for any particular store like this, right?
Like that that is proposing outdoor seating.
That is proposing outdoor seating.
Twenty-five percent of the number of interior seats.
So in other words, they would like more clearly defined, uh, uh, parameters with which to determine the number of parking places when outdoor seating is included in a site plan.
Yes.
It's fair. I agree, only if the outdoor seating exceeds the greater of twenty-five seats or twenty-five percent number of interior seats shall be included when computed the required number. And, and that's a rule of thumb based on what Dennis is saying.
Uh, Dennis was fine with this.
Right. Okay.
Okay, so.
I trust him. That's outdoor seating, it doesn't have to be included, but if you are, if you're gonna have a larger outdoor seating area.
So if this is included just for when you see future things, that actually means that I could combine five and six. Just, you know, because they would say that the six, um, is for outdoor seating areas associated with restaurants, fast food restaurants, bars, and brew pubs. Um, so then that would be combined. Number seven, amenities for the use of residents of the Transit Village zoning district and their guests, such as swimming pools, tennis courts, and clubhouses, shall not be subject to an off-street parking requirement, but shall provide adjacent parking in proximity to the amenity as determined by the planning board. The requirement for adequate parking in proximity to the amenity may be satisfied by visitor parking and on-street parking. The planning board's comment was that this board should reflect upon the number of outdoor uses that are allowable under these recommendations.
But if there was an accessory use for residents, would it not be walkable?
Well, not necessarily, um, because the site is actually very large, so if the amenity was, you know, a mile down the road.
Walking trails, for example, that are in the center or way over there, is a, okay, I see what you're saying.
I mean, I live in a pretty small development, and I can tell you I drive to the pool.
Why not walk to the water?
But, okay, so they would probably walk to the water.
All right, so don't use the walking trail as an example, I get.
But, I mean, I never wanna walk back up a hill after the pool, so I actually drive.
The number of outdoor uses that are allowable.
It just.
I'm not sure if I, I follow that. We should reflect upon the number of outdoor uses that are allowable under this recommendation.
I think they were saying that there seems to be a lot of things that are allowing outdoor seating.
Yeah, okay, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they would all be considered at the same time for any one particular residential area, right?
No, I mean, these are all things that are all subject to site plan review by the planning board. And if there's something that comes up that the planning board says.
And that's where it gets restricted.
This is something that shouldn't have an outdoor use, or no outdoor seating should be provided for that little Italian deli. Then that's, uh, definitely provide seating.
Where am I gonna have my espresso?
So, just as an example.
Where are you gonna get the gabo? Exactly.
But it may be something that may, could be also further flushed out after the secret process. You could, you might be able to get a better idea through that. Um, new subsections F, G, and H. F, offloading, off-street loading standards, notwithstanding any other provisions. In chapter three ten, the planning board shall determine in view of the uses proposed and their loading requirements, whether to require off-street loading berths and where required, shall further determine the location, configuration, design, scale, and orientation of such off-street loading berths. Um, G, zoning requirements. Number one, required street frontage, notwithstanding any other provision of this chapter, including section three ten dash twelve A, a minimum of twenty feet of street frontage shall be required. Number two, yards fronting on a straight, a state highway and any, on any other streets, notwithstanding any other provision, including section three ten dash twelve B and three ten dash twelve D. Any lot having frontage on a state highway and on any other street or streets shall have as its front yard the area between the street line and the front door of the principal use. The yard opposite the front yard shall be considered the rear yard irrespective of whether it's a corner lot. And such rear yard shall be unoccupied and open to the sky not less than twenty-five feet in depth, except that amenities such as bike paths, sidewalks, benches, decorative walls, trees, lawns, and earth and burns are permitted within the required yard.
So is that saying that front yard setbacks would be inclusive of rights of way?
It's from the street line. I'd have to see how your code specifically defines.
Street line is the, the line at the edge of the street, right?
Yeah, we have a ten-foot right away, but.
It would have to.
I thought it was fifteen, to be honest with you.
We'd have to check what your code says.
On either side of this center line.
No, it's, well, the, the, uh, most of our roads are thirty feet, we have forty, technically, it should be forty feet, and that's with the ten-foot right away on either side.
I thought it was fifteen, okay, either way.
Front yard setback is normally from the, from the curb line of the street.
It is, okay.
Regardless of the.
Snow removal, we need a place to put the snow.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, that's an issue that we need to deal with. Cause, you know, if we got a big snowstorm, you know, fourteen, twenty inches, those plows are coming by, they're pushing that snow, you know, we don't take it away.
Well, I would imagine that it would be something along the lines of what happens on thirty-two in the downtown districts, where we come by with a front-end loader or a skid steer or something the next day. I mean, I can't imagine it. We're just gonna plow snow up onto the sidewalks and then just leave it there.
Look, you actually have, um, or your, your planning board actually has required in certain applications that there be snow easements, so that when something is plowed, there's a place that the village is allowed to put the snow. Um, an example is the Mercedes application, uh, the Timber Trail subdivision, so it is something that they take into account. I have made a note about that. Um, if you don't wanna include it in this law, I will include it in notes for our office whenever we get to the stage of, you know, drafting a resolution, making sure that this is something that they discuss.
The ten feet is technically where we put the snow.
Right.
Or, you know, we could put sidewalks in if we wanted.
Considering the higher density and the, and the manner in which these buildings will be constructed, I would imagine that we'd have to have something like that applicable to the entire zone, no?
Well, don't forget, we, we may look at this a little differently. There's, I believe there's gonna be HOAs and everything down there. They might have their own, uh, service personnel that would take care of the sidewalks. I don't, I don't know that for a fact. But, um, so.
Well, if you look at, um, like the village of Goshen, for example, when they plow, they end up plowing it all into one pile, and then the next day they end up taking it out by dump trucks, so.
That's what I envisioned for this, yeah, something like that.
I think it's gonna end up being something like that, but I think the planning board's going to take that into account when they're looking at the layout, that there has to be some place for the snow to go. I mean, it doesn't just melt once it hits the pavement.
Eventually.
Well, eventually, yeah, well, we'll just let them.
No, by July.
Unless we make them put electric under all the roads and sidewalks.
Oh, my gosh.
I don't see a problem.
Well, you know, we'll just.
I'm kidding. Yeah, great, exactly, that's it, yeah.
Howard falls off his chair. Um, so I will mark that down for the snow removal, and I know there's two board members here tonight who have just made a mental note of that. So then, the last thing, I'm sorry, the planning board.
Well, we should discuss that with the highway department and the applicant at another date and maybe.
Figure it out, yeah.
The last one is waivers. When reasonable and subject to appropriate conditions, the planning board shall have the authority to waive for projects in the TVZD any requirements for approval of site plans in the event any such requirements are found not to be necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or general welfare, or inappropriate to a particular site plan. Um, the planning board had a comment on this, as did our office, that as a whole, us and the planning board, were very concerned as to how broad this waiver provision is, and recommended that the board put restrictions on this.
Do you have suggestions?
I will suggest something to you. I didn't prepare any for tonight, cause I wasn't sure if the board would also agree that it's too broad, but it basically says.
If council's saying it's too broad, then, you know.
Well, I didn't, I didn't wanna.
Our planning board.
You know.
I'm just curious, it says the planning board shall have the authority to waive, and if the planning board thinks we're giving them too broad authority, then, I guess it is.
Well, I think they, they want some guidelines.
It exposes them, yeah, just like the parking restrictions with the, yeah.
Yeah, they also want some, some guidelines as to when a waiver would be appropriate, rather than just these extremely general statements there, so. I think it's a, it's a very valid concern, and, and our office was concerned about it, too.
Well.
But I can propose.
Obviously, yeah, let's take a look at some proposed line.
Can I make a suggestion again on that? That point I brought up earlier about, uh, field changes? You know, uh, it could just be a memo that the planning board is thinking of doing this. Does the village board have, or waiving this requirement, does the village board have any problems where, you know, a lot of times Dennis do a field change, he'll send a, 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 a letter to the, uh, trustees, basically saying, uh, I'm gonna okay this if I don't hear back from you within five business days, that you have a problem with it.
Well, I think that field change, for a field change, that makes sense, and to a limited extent, I think it would work here. But if it's something like, if the planning board waives, trying to think of a very drastic.
Well, I'm just trying to help you out, if you don't like that.
They say, you know what, no parking is required at all for any restaurants, something like that. And then they wrote to the board, and the board said, what are you, crazy? I mean, it, I think they're looking for just a little bit more guidance on it. And I think it can be written in a way that gives board flexibility and makes this board comfortable. I just don't think that this is it.
The way that reads to me, they could waive just about anything. And, and while I have confidence in the current planning board, we don't know what's gonna be around ten years from now or fifteen years from now.
Right.
They could all be.
And it could be higher than sixty feet, it could be a hundred and twenty feet.
There you go, exactly, that's a good example, sure.
They could waive.
So, I'll, I'll propose something to you, um, along the lines of the discussions that you had tonight as a whole. Um, but, I know you're gonna be sad to hear this, but that's the last thing that I had. I've only talked for an hour and a half straight.
Good job.
Sorry.
Are you hungry than you were before?
Well, after the Italian.
All this talk about the Italian.
I know, right? And the margaritas.
Just follow me after this.
Um, but if anybody has any other comments, I'll take what you discussed tonight, and I'll put that into, uh, proposed local law for your consideration. That law will then be incorporated into the EIS for the Gardens at Harriman Station's current, um, EIS. So this, this will all be studied as part of that. You are listed as an involved agency, everything's gonna come to you. Everything already has come to you, but it, it is gonna come to you, and the planning board is proposing that this draft local law be included as an appendix. So anybody who reads the EIS and it says, wait, what local law, oh, appendix N, there it is. So, but it was really subject to what you wanted in this law, so I will take this and be back to you guys.
Very good.
No, it's not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not now.
So, um.
Margaritas and a.
Jeff, I guess you could turn off the TV now, and I hope this, uh, the people like this, uh, little work session we had today in keeping everybody involved.
I know, I do.